Are we in? We're good? All right. Good evening and welcome to the first city council meeting of 2021. We are out of 2020. Hooray, hooray. At this time, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, we're going to start off the first council meeting in a wonderful way. We're going to recognize a Eagle Scout. Is Emily here? Raise your hand if you're here, Emily. There she is. Okay, because of this, I'm going to, I'm going to read the proclamations and everything from up here. Then I'll come out there and present it to you. Is that okay? And then we can take pictures or whatever you guys want to do. Emily is the first, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, you're the first female Eagle Scout ever. You're in a group of women that became the first Eagle Scout. So we're lucky to have one here. And are you Troop 250? All right, so we got, Tika K's got one of the first Eagle Scouts. Quite an accomplishment. Quite an accomplishment. Palmetto Council, okay, they're even better. Okay, let me read this. This is a proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout Emily Plzarzick. Paluzik? Plarsick? One for three. Emily P., that's what, until you get married, then you'd be Emily Smith. Okay, whereas in February of 2019, the Boy Scouts of America opened scouting to females for participation, and Emily P. has proven herself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas Mrs. P. is the first female to be awarded the Eagle Scout Award in the Palmetto Council. And the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow her throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young woman has shown. Whereas citizens of the city of Tika appreciate her hard work and to create a diversity-inclusive inclusion garden at Winthrop University in order to foster an environment for impactful conversations to take place, specifically in the area of diversity inclusion. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the city of Tika duly assembled do hereby congratulate and recognize Emily P. for her, her achievement in becoming an Eagle Scout. It is our honor to have her as a member of our community.
All right, I'm Emily Plarzick. Plarzick, or Plarchek, however you prefer. I, I polled a group of Winthrop alumni, students, and scholars to get feedback on what phrases and words spawned conversation and thought on diversity inclusion. I created my garden based off of those things and their responses. I created stool, concrete sculpture stools for seating in the garden. And around, on the sides, I used natural materials for, that I received from the polls and from all of the people I met along the way. I had a lot of great diversity and inclusion conversation with a great wide range of people. And I also, so I wrote the words that I, nine, a total of nine words that I got from the, from the responses on the stools. And my garden was, yeah, my garden was themed based off of that and along with the impressionist art style and the artist Georgia O'Keeffe.
Okay. We do it the same way? Okay, let's move on to item B. Is our public safety recognition of Ned Chamberlain. And Gus Machunas is going to do the honors here. You thought you were here for pickleball or something, is that right? You don't know, you're just going to get your civic education in. Go ahead, take it over, Gus.
Pickleball and drinks at the shore club, I believe, is what got him down here. Since this happened on the, the east side, as we call it, I've been asked to, to recognize a very heroic task. Let me read you a story. On the day after Christmas, Ned Chamberlain of River Lakes was working in his backyard when he saw a man in a kayak around his cove. He noticed that the man had fallen asleep in the kayak, so he was watching to make sure that everything was okay, because not a lot of people fall asleep in kayaks. Shortly thereafter, the man's kayak flipped over and he fell out of the kayak. He tried to turn it over, could not get it to turn over, and for some reason started to swim back towards Nivens Creek Landing. Ned called out to him and asked if he was okay and if he needed anything. The gentleman did not respond. He turned and started swimming back towards the cove, and he suddenly stopped moving and was lying motionless, face down in the water. Ned called 911, grabbed a rope to try and pull him out. Didn't work, so he got into the water while on the phone with 911 dispatch, turned the gentleman over as he was laying face down in the water. He pulled him towards shore, started chest compressions on the shore while on the phone with 911. Did not feel a pulse or breath when he first pulled the gentleman towards the shore, but after chest compressions, he was able to get a faint pulse. He did this for a few minutes until the first responders arrived. Fire department was first on the scene, followed by Tika K PD, York County Sheriff, Piedmont ambulance, and then DNR, because it was involved in the lake. They moved him from the lake to the dock where the paramedics worked on him until they were able to take him away by ambulance. After follow-up with DNR and others, turned out that the gentleman was hospitalized for a few weeks with pneumonia, but he has since recovered and been discharged. None of this would have not happened, it had not been for Ned Chamberlain of River Lakes. So we do have a commendation for you, sir.
Everybody leaves. Boy, Gus really knows how to clear a room, I tell you. All right, next we have public comments. I noticed Trish, you're on for public comments. I'm going to hold yours when we start talking about pickleball, okay? Because it'll be maybe 20 minutes, and I want to get everybody's fresh in their mind what we're going to talk about. Item three is approval of minutes. Council, you've seen the minutes. Are there any additions, subtractions, or changes? Seeing none, the minutes stand as printed. Item number four is 4A, economic development didn't meet, so we no reason to have a, a discussion on that. And 4B, 4B is a planning commission with Alicia.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So the planning commission did meet on Monday, January 11th. They discussed new business. They adopted their meeting scheduled for 2021. So they do still plan on meeting the first Monday of every month, except for July and September. So just pay attention to the calendar if you're in July and September, and you should be good for coming to our planning meetings. They did discuss the, the creation of appearance review process. That is something I sent just recently out to city council. Not sure if you all have had the chance to take a look at this, but the planning commission is looking for some guidance from city council. One of the things they're considering is creating an appearance review process, which basically would allow a body, it could be the planning commission, it could be a new committee, it could be council, to evaluate or take a look at different permits that are submitted from the commercial side and review them to ensure that they're in alignment with certain design criteria. This would only apply to commercial. And it really, I'll just quote some from Chairman Leonard's memo that he sent us, but this could serve to avoid the anywhere USA appearance that is prevalent in many recent developments and to ensure that the values of the city are reflected in all new commercial development. And so before having the planning commission go down this pathway, revising their, their draft work plan any further, we wanted to bring this item to city council and see what the appetite was for having the planning commission do further evaluation and come, and come forth to this body with a recommendation. It would require an amendment, I believe, to the zoning ordinance in order to, to establish this, this review process and a, and the formation of a committee. The, the town of Fort Mill also has one of these. I think it's slightly different in, in the makeup and what they do, but it isn't something that's unprecedented. And it is something that our, our local municipalities and our county are, are doing as well.
So this is a citizen committee, like?
It's, I think it's up to us to determine if it's, it could be members of the planning commission, from what I understand. It could be members of the planning commission that form like a subcommittee that does the review. It could be an entire new committee. It could be the planning commission, I think, in whole. What we would, what we would do is, if that's something that we want the planning commission to do, they'll add it to their work plan. They'll do some evaluations, see, and then come up with a recommendation. Whatever they think, based on their research and analysis, would be best for us.
Is there any appetite, so to speak, for, to do it within the committee? Like, would it be an additional duty, an additional committee that's meeting above and beyond the planning commission? Or they can come in 30 minutes before the planning commission, or?
I think it could be either or.
So do you guys want to come up with a, what you think is the best route to take on that? And make a, and maybe bring us some?
That's what the plan is. We really would more like to see it prioritize within what your work plan discussion is going to be tonight and see where it fits in there. Right now, it's kind of in the top four of our things we would do, but we could drop it off, you know, we could drop it down.
I don't see making it a separate committee. More people have to qualify for it and must vote on it, if you can do it within. I mean, at least to start it, and if you find out the workload is too heavy, maybe we break it out of that or something?
Yeah, that wouldn't be, you know, last year, I don't know how many commercial developments there were, one, two?
Oh, well.
Maybe, right?
And we're expecting maybe one more commercial development?
Right.
In the history of Tika?
From our perspective, the priority should be, if we're going to have these new mixed-use districts, we should have that process in place if we think it's important before that starts.
Would this be something that maybe that small group that was working, like, with the economic development committee? Like, perhaps a couple of members from planning?
It could be. It could be. You know, there's some expertise we think might be important. There's also streamlining any subsequent reviews. So if the planning committee is a part of that activity, you've already got, that group already spun up on the project.
Right. I think that would make sense.
Yeah, you could have members of, like, a business, you know, you could have a requirement. One position has to be filled by an existing business. One is, you know, a subject matter expert, architectural person, you know, you could, they could, they could come back to us with a recommendation that defines what the best practice is.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I just, I, I perused the document that you sent, Alicia, 30 minutes before the meeting. And, you know, in principle, I certainly liked the idea quite a bit. I would say the one thing that jumped out at me that concerned me a little bit, which could easily be remedied, was it could add one to two months to the approval of any project. And I, you know, we already, you know, the, there's a subcommittee of the EDC working to streamline our business, or make recommendations to streamline the city's business license practices. And I don't feel that we need to further encumber anybody if they're bringing a viable development to us. That's just my two cents.
And there's probably ways to figure out to do two reviews in one sitting or something like that, right? I think that's manageable.
Love the idea, though.
So it sounds like we'll go ahead and give them the direction to proceed forward. Probably not that, a top priority, but within that, that top four or five. Just given the amount of development coming down the pipeline. And of course, you know, you'll see once you do have time to, to scan through it, that there is, talk about coordinating with EDC so that they can make sure that they are on the same page and not doing anything that?
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't have a chance to look at it. I didn't realize it was in there.
Yeah, I sent it, I'm sorry, I sent it at like 6:20, so.
Okay.
I was already here.
Okay, let's see. Old business, they did discuss the, the commission's 2021 work plan, but decided to hold until the city council had the opportunity to discuss our work plan, because our work plan does have some implications on theirs. So once we adopt ours, they'll be able to adjust as necessary. They also completed a new analysis of the housing products available in the city based on a fresh baseline development report prepared by staff in December. So if anyone needs a copy of that, please let me know. I think it was sent out, but. And yeah, the next meeting will be February 8th. And, oh, I also did give them an overview of our work plan as well, noting that it was draft at the time, so that they had an idea of what, what could potentially be coming down the, down the line.
That it? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item five, unfinished business. This is the second reading of an ordinance to annex and rezone tax map number 650-00-00-037 from BD1 in the county to BD1 in the city. The applicant is current property owner and proprietor of Brewster's Real Ice Cream and is proposing to annex and rezone the property to similarly commercial district within the city's boundary. The property is currently zoned BD1 in the county. The purpose of the BD1 district in York County is to provide for small-scale commercial services and convenience uses. The BD1 district in the city is intended to create and protect commercial centers for neighborhood, retail, and professional service. Staff and planning commission recommend, recommendation is for approval. So this is Brewster's Ice Cream wanting to have a Tika K address. They want to come into Tika K. Are there any questions or comments? So this is the second reading. We've already been through this once before. All right, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to annex and rezone tax map number 650-00-00-037 from BD1 in the county to B1 in the city.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Welcome to Tika K Brewster's.
Mayor, just for the record, who's got, who do you have down for the second on that?
I'm sorry?
Who do you have down for the second on that? Gus or Alicia?
Alicia was, okay. Let's go to item 6A. Okay, new business, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Article 1, Section 42-24 and 42-26 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Tika as it relates to recycle waste. As we discussed in the city, with the city manager during the December council meeting and has been well documented, we have an issue with recycling contamination. While our communication and education pieces are helping, it is still nowhere close to where it has to be if recycling program is going to continue. The amendment to the code before us tonight for the city to remove recycling carts and discontinue that service for those who repeatedly put non-recyclable materials in the recycle carts. So this is, you guys got a possibility of making it recycle go away for everybody if we don't do something about the contamination in our recycle cart. Some people are using it as a second trash can, and it's not designed for that. So if we don't figure out a way to decontaminate our recycle, we lose recycle. It's pretty much, are there any comments? I know you have a comment. You have to.
Yeah.
Yes, you do have to.
It's my jam. I just wanted to say, Charlie, I was wondering if perhaps Alicia and I had talked briefly before the meeting tonight about putting some parameters around this and possibly bringing it as a resolution, maybe next council meeting, along with the second read of this. Just, and maybe staff could put something together and then send it out to council before the next meeting. Just how long would the recycle cart be taken away? What the fees, how that would work, the fee structure would work? You know, just the, the specifics of it, so that we have some kind of guidelines around it.
Absolutely. Here in the next couple of weeks, be glad to push out at least some type of a framework.
Yeah.
For council to comment on, give feedback on, and we put it into a resolution ready for you at your February meeting.
Make sure the public knows.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, and just, just for the public, Mayor, if I can, the two sections that are being changed. One is, is definition, is the definition of recycles in the ordinance. Just removing that completely, because it seems to be a moving target over the last couple of years. You know, so it's going to be whatever the MRF is accepting. You know, we'll, we'll keep that list at city hall. If folks, you know, I think we, Joseph pushes it out on somewhat of a weekly basis. And then the, the other section that changes, or that's, council's considering for changes is, Mayor, exactly what you said. You know, for those repeat offenders that are using it as that trash bin, constantly putting contamination in it, gives us the ability to remove them from that, that, that program. So, but yeah, I'm sorry, we'd be glad to put together a, a framework to, to send out to council to get some feedback on. Not a problem.
Just food, food for thought. I mean, I agree in principle with maybe defining it a, a little bit better, but I also wonder if it shouldn't be left as is, so it allows some leeway. You know, there's going to be a difference between someone who accidentally recycles some things due to lack of knowledge. Not that we haven't tried to educate everybody, especially councilman, councilwoman Overman. But if we don't have any leverage, here again, there's a difference between somebody who willfully re-drywalls a bedroom and puts all the drywall in their recycle bin and puts it out there versus somebody who accidentally puts the little plastic trays from their blueberries in there. And if you define it down to the letter, then you lose that leeway. That's my only concern.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Microphone, two folds? It's on. I'm just not talking loud enough. Two-fold, number one, I'd assume there's a reduction in cost to the citizens. Assume we would remove recycle collection?
No, sir.
No. It's the same fee, they're running the same trucks. Number two, option for those that say, hey, my family's not a recycle family. We don't do it, we're part of the problem. Do those citizens have the option to opt out? Let's say if there was a $5 savings or something in that scenario.
As long as, yeah, so the fees are based on all being involved, so.
And I get that. I was just asking.
As, as we move towards rebidding, or get to the, to the conclusion portion of this, this existing contract, I think that's a conversation for council to have as to whether we continue with the curbside or?
Split the two.
Or get, get rid of that and just do trash and allow people to use the convenience centers, things like that. I think that's definitely a conversation for council to have.
Well, and I think number three, something to talk to signature waste about is if it's a Monday and that recycle container full of drywall is sitting at the road, that's a cue to dump it. Whereas at this point, and I could only speak from my, my personal experience, at this point, if there's a sticker on the top of the can, they drive by it.
On a Monday, yes.
If someone accidentally puts non-recyclables in that recycle can, puts it to the road on a Monday, it's getting overlooked and not getting dumped.
That is correct. And then on Tuesday, on recycle day, is when they come back through.
And then now they're dumping trash in recycle.
Correct.
I think just communicating to signature waste, say, hey, if it's out on the road on a Monday, because someone may put drywall in, because the kid grabbed the wrong damn trash can, dump it. If it's at the road on Monday, dump it.
Right now, well, I absolutely understand where you're coming from on that. The, the issue would be, and where we've run into issues, is people were pulling out their trash and recycle bins, and they're only paying to have one 96-gallon cart dumped. And then they're sticking that recycle bin out there. It's getting skipped over on Monday. If that following Tuesday happens to be the recycle day, then it's getting dumped. And with the lid closed, you know, using the automated arms, they don't know what's in it. People, yeah, and we're only talking about probably 3% of the households. You know, it's, I mean, based on the contaminations, we've been able to kind of, and it's not the same areas every time, but it's, the loads that are contaminated are bad contaminated, but not all the loads are contaminated, if that makes sense. But most certainly, Signature Waste has been involved in a lot of conversations leading up to this point, as has the county. County staff has been great. They want to be involved in the solution. They don't want to see us stop recycling, so they're, yeah. At this point, they probably could have said, hey, enough's enough, guys, but they're definitely working with us, helping us, so we'll continue to work through that. As I told Ms. Dash in a communication earlier today, yeah, assuming council moves forward with this, you know, what, what we're going to start next week is putting together that education plan, which will include Signature Waste, include the county, so that as, as we move into February, we're going to spend the next couple of months just educating, 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 before we ever go to an enforcement-type thing. But Signature Waste is already skipping carts on recycle day. Skipped one today. I think it was over in Lakewood. Styrofoam hanging out of the top of it. It was obvious. Says it recyclable, so driving right by us. So as we're seeing those, the drivers are getting a lot more conscious about it, trying to help us out. So, but yeah, point well taken. If, if the cart's out there, somebody stuck their recycle cart out, let's go ahead and grab it on a Monday, on a trash day. Makes sense. Definitely have that conversation.
Charlie, something you said will only impact 3% of households. So I guess my question then is, if it's only 3% of households, will, will this change make enough of a difference to allow us to continue the program?
Remains to be seen, to be honest. Really don't know. I mean, this was a conversation that came out from talking with the director of the MRF, talking with Signature Waste, and just kind of putting our heads together. Yeah, if we've only got a few that are violating, yeah, the problem is, is it's not widespread, but the ones that are doing it is bad. You know, I mean, they're filling the, the recycle cart up with yard waste. They're throwing lots of glass in there. You know, things are just obviously not recyclable. Yeah, the glass and the yard debris are the ones that end up contaminating the load. You know, yeah, a plastic bag's not going to contaminate the whole load. Please, public, don't take that to mean it's okay to throw the bags in there. But, so we're trying to target those things that are contaminating. Yeah, I mean, people are throwing 15 wine bottles in their, yeah, in their recycle bin.
That might have been me.
Yeah, that, when the grass, when it gets compacted, all of a sudden, now that loads, yeah, that loads trash. So we don't think there's, you know, 1,000, 2,000 homes that are constantly doing it. We think it's probably less, you know, 3%, yeah, maybe. So it's just trying to figure out where they're coming from consistently and trying to curb that behavior is, is what we're trying to do. Does it fix it? I guess that remains to be seen.
I get, from the, the ordinance revisions, I think from, you know, from my perspective, I, I agree, Russ, in terms of not changing ordinance necessarily to define it too strictly, but to Heather's point, putting together a framework which just gives a few, like, the overview of, or parameters, you could say, of working between. And one, one thing I saw was the, I think it was, if you violate it and you were caught, you would, you'd have the program taken away forever. And so maybe taking a look at that and seeing if there's, there's ways where, yes, you know, we can, we can make a point that there was an issue, but maybe at six months down the road, then, you know, they get to participate again. Or, or some, you know, whatever you guys find. How do we, how do we re-engage with them or get them to re-engage in the cycling, recycling program the right way? Because as you know, when folks aren't recycling, then they're putting in the trash. And trash is more expensive than recycling, and so we want to encourage that behavior. We want people to recycle. We just need them to do it correctly. So how can we, how can we write the right ordinance or make sure we're enacting the right, you know, functions administratively to encourage people to recycle the right way, but get them back in the program as soon as we can?
We'll put some stuff together and get it back to you here in, in the, in the next week or so. Absolutely.
Anything else? Any public comments on what we're doing with the trash, with the, why don't you come up here to the?
Yep, come to the microphone. Don't want to talk anymore now, Dave.
State your name and, name and address.
My name's Barb Straight, and I live on Scholar's Run. And I'm just thinking, like, when? like, when, with my family, and I recycle, I do, you know, Heather, I do my part. But if, if ever it is, like, you have too much trash, I think that that could be a huge problem, and where people get lazy and throw their extra trash.
Absolutely.
And then recycle. So if, if it could be communicated, if people could pay for an extra trash can.
They can.
And maybe that would be a good thing to communicate with the public, like, you know, we know that you want to do your part, and you're probably not, because you're running out of space, and so, you know, your husband's going out, and that one's full, so you're putting it into this one. So I'm just, you know, that could be helpful.
Absolutely. I have noticed when we've had licensed and bonded workers at our house, working legally, they don't know one trash can from another, they take stuff and just throw it, and I go out and, and look at my recycle, and it's got tons of bags in it, and I have to go back and read, put it all back in the other can, so. And, and what we do in our neighborhood, I notice that if somebody rolls their can out, trash can, and it's full or overflowing, they'll go to a neighbor's can, it might not have much in it, and throw trash in there.
And, and even, like, I have little kids, and, you know, I'll tell them, will you take this out, make sure you put it in the one that has a recycle on top, but I mean, you know, they could possibly put it in the wrong, wrong one, too. So I just like, I would actually like to pay for another one, because we always have extra trash.
We can arrange that.
And go to the, so.
You can get another can, you can go to.
Go directly to Signature Waste.
Yeah, and I mean, I will, I just, I'm thinking, just as, you know, as a citizen, maybe that would be a good thing to recommend to people, here's your other option.
Exactly.
Do the right thing and recycle, pay for the extra trash if you're using too much.
Yep, that's a good idea. That would be one of our courses, or one of the things we put in that, that letter.
Well, and we are in a, I don't want to say a position of leverage, but there's 100% chance the Signature Waste doesn't want to pick up 3,000 recycle containers to put back in their warehouse. Like, absolutely not.
I mean, and the ultimate goal with all of this isn't to, you know, prevent people from being able to recycle. You know, we, we just assume everybody be able to keep their carts and participate in the program. And it's, and we've never envisioned it as a, you know, one strike, you're out, you know, type deal, you know, I mean, even after the education, for a lot of the reasons that, that you mentioned. But, but I think between the educational pieces that we'll be putting together, and subsequent warning letters and things like that, I think we'll be able to demonstrate before anybody's cart gets removed, that they've been informed multiple, multiple times. Because as we said, our goal isn't to, to stop, you know, take people's carts, we want them to hang on to those carts, just use them the right way.
Well, and not to continue the conversation, I know we need to move on, but just a thought, with the, the way the trucks are able to be tracked, from where they start and where they stop, if there is a contaminated load, and they picked up 50 containers to fill up their truck before making the trip, but, but they have waypoints from here's where we started, here's where we stopped, the contamination is somewhere in this area, and a letter goes out to all of those 100 residences. So now it's a community watch program, like, hey, dude, you're about to screw us.
Right.
Oh, don't worry, they send me pictures all the time.
Well, I thought.
That's how we, that's how Signature knows not to pick up the cart, because so-and-so's neighbor sent me a picture.
I, I thought the carts, when they went up and in, the trash can, the trash truck automatically took a picture of every. It does, they've, they've got cameras in the hopper, so, you know, unfortunately, it doesn't pick it up until it, you know, the cart's upside down. Right, right. Everything's fallen out, but that gives the driver the opportunity to note the address, this is, hey, whoa, there's a, you know, a bunch of leaves, grass clippings, glass, whatever, I can note that address. You know, so we're working on those things, the county has offered to even have some of their employees riding with the Signature Waste drivers. That way, they're watching the camera, they're marking addresses while the other guy's driving. We're, we're exploring every option to where we can pinpoint it down and, and be able to target that specific resident, you know, wherever that may be. But yeah, I, I, I agree with, with Mr. Richard as well. If, if we're not sure, but we know it's this street, then here's a letter to everybody. Absolutely.
And I guess the reality is, if the, if the recycling program doesn't get corrected, it's gonna be more expensive in the long run, because, again, trash loads at the landfill are more expensive than recycling. So it's, it's a bottom line thing, too, for, for all of us that live here in Tika K, because we all pay for solid waste.
And we're at the end of the rope. I mean, I know you girls specifically have been dealing with it personally for two years now.
I mean, who knew, right?
Yeah.
This is ridiculous.
All right, so we need a motion, right? So we haven't talked about that, it's been, it's been a while, just this whole brain has to catch up some. How about a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go.
Members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Article 1, Sections 42-24 and 42-26 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Tika K as it relates to recycle waste.
I have a motion by Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I gotta let, Heather's got a second. This is, this, I gotta give it to her.
Give it to her.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item 6B is a consideration of letter of credit and performance, labor and material surety agreement, and bond reduction for the courtyards at Tika K. The council previously approved an original letter of credit for the courtyards at Tika K for the amount of $170,841.50. The current request is to reduce the LOC to $129,685.25. The city engineer has reviewed the estimate, has found the reduced amount is appropriate for the completion of the remaining site development work. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the draft and amended performance, labor, and material surety agreement to accompany the LOC reduction. Are there any questions or comments on this one? Pretty straightforward, we do this all the time. Bottom motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, go ahead, Gus.
Stereo.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of credit and the performance, labor, and material surety agreement and bond reduction for the courtyards at Tika K contingent upon approval of substance and form by the city attorney.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous again. Trish, you want to get your friends out there, we'll wait two or three minutes, if you want to bring the pickleball people in? Or, we're already here?
I think they left.
Okay. We're gonna go to, sorry?
We're keeping the numbers.
All right, we saw them on the way in, we know that's a pretty good sized crowd, we don't have that size crowd here too often, except for back in the day, we did coyotes and a couple of the crazy things like that, right? So let's talk about item 6C, which is a motion to approve allocating hospitality tax funds necessary to convert one tennis court located in the maintenance facility into two pickleball courts, in an amount not to exceed, do we go to $20,000? Charlie, are we staying with 15?
Um, I think, Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to get Joey to come up and walk us through, so the rest of council is aware, I can click it if you want. So I think when this conversation began, Mayor, we were talking about basically doing what was done in 2018, taking one tennis court, converting it into two pickleball courts. Joey, I'm gonna turn it to you.
All right, I'll take it away. So as you can see on the, the diagram with the existing tennis courts, that, that's kind of how it's structured right now, if you can envision the two pickleball courts as Court One, and then Court Two being the tennis court there. What we initially proposed is basically replicating what we have already with the pickleball course. We've worked with Court One to get an estimate for that work, and that quote came back about, around $14,800 on that. So those are the two diagrams there, and then based off of some feedback that we just received from some avid pickleballers, we've asked Court One to.
[laughing]
I don't think so. We asked, we, we took the diagram that, that avid pickleballers gave us, and then asked Court One, what's feasible, well, one, is it feasible, and if two, what does that price point look like? We got almost the immediate response from Court One, that Proposal Two is not feasible. And then Court One, or the Proposal One, actually will work. We do not have a price on that ballpark, I'd imagine it's gonna be a few thousand dollars, but it'd be a shot in the dark to kind of guess what that would be at this time. But they did say that they would get pricing back as soon as possible.
So Mayor, to answer your question, if this is the route council would like to go this evening, you know, just looking at their quotes, we think we can do that for less than 20, for, for a not to exceed 20,000. I know what we originally gave in your packet was the not to exceed 15, but again, that goes back to just doing the two courts versus the four that we were made aware of this morning, so.
So you didn't have that to exceed 20,000? Okay. Thanks, Joey, I think we got it.
Okay.
Trish, you want to come up and speak for a minute and tell us what the pickleballers want? Because you're the ones that are gonna be using it.
Do I need to say my whole name?
Yes, just your name and your, where you live.
Trish Snyder, I live at 1898 Larkspur Way in Tika K.
Okay, speak up.
Speak up. So I'm here to address you once again. The last time I was here was to thank you for adding the pickleball courts that we did receive, and now I'm here to represent the people that have been using those courts. You all know the saying, if you build it, they will come. Well, they've been coming. So we are in dire need of extra courts to be added. I've had numerous groups approach me to talk about getting additional courts because of the, the need that we do have. My, back in the summer, I sent an email to Joey, Michael, I'm sorry, Charlie, and also Mayor O'Neil, saying that the different groups have been approaching me and asking for additional courts to be built here on, on, at Tika K. I met with Mayor O'Neil down at the courts, and just explained and talked about different scenarios of what could be presented and done. At that time, we, we weren't sure if a whole tennis court was gonna be given over to courts, or if we were gonna be adding two courts on the back ends of the, the tennis court, enabling tennis and pickleball to still have the court. It wasn't until we saw a proposal that just came through, where we saw that just the two courts were being added. If you remember back when we did the initial courts, the initial proposal was to have four courts built where the two courts are now, but there wasn't enough room for that to be safely added. So we opted, or recommended just going with the two courts then. The area where we're talking, the, the tennis court is now, has ample room for four courts to be added in there. So it would be nice to get those courts. The biggest problem that I see with, with tennis and pickleball sharing courts is, and I'm, I'm there quite often, I only see tennis people waiting when pickleball is using their courts. I was there this past Friday, it had, it had rained throughout the day, the courts were wet, I played at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and every single court was being used for pickleball. And that's with people bringing towels to dry the courts off. That's how serious people are. So if you look at the proposal, it does show that four courts could fit there with ample room in between the courts. So I'm not sure, well, now I'm sure, because I know that I did talk with, uh-oh, I'm out of time. I did briefly talk with Charlie prior to the meeting, and he did show me that you were reconsidering the, you know, going to the four courts. So that would be great, if you could do so.
And you're happy with it, so if we do the other four, if it fits, I guess we, we already got a thumbs up that it will fit, we just don't know the price yet.
Assuming the measurements, that, those are not our measurements, Tim Reading, you know, provided those measurements. Assuming those measurements are accurate, the contractor suggests they could do the four courts, running parallel with the other two courts. He specifically said turning them to run perpendicular would not work due to court orientation and spacing and things of that nature, so.
So if we find out later in this process that that doesn't work, because he's come out and remeasured or did whatever he's done, we'll let you know before we proceed, but.
Perfect.
Okay, and we'll, and everybody's happy now, and?
Yeah.
The pickleballers aren't gonna mob us when we leave?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's too cold out.
So I, I was, I've told a couple of people, I, I thought it was Christmas Eve, but she corrected me, it was New Year's Eve, 7 o'clock at night or so, that was you? I drove by, and the lights were on, it was foggy, misty, and I was gonna turn back around and turn the court lights off, I thought, why are they on? And then I noticed pickleball people were playing in, in the mist, in the.
Oh, yeah.
Wet, and the.
We play through everything.
Fog, there weren't any tennis people out there, I guess the tennis balls get kind of soaking wet with that felt, and the pickleball doesn't get wet, and you just play along.
The pickleball just crack.
Yeah.
It's cold, they crack.
Seventeen-year-old showed up at 11:30, probably Saturday night, maybe Friday night? No, Saturday, I believe. It's like, dude, where you been? He's been playing pickleball at 11:30 at night.
And the great thing is that there, there are families now playing together, it's been wonderful.
Everything you said about the, the pickleball craze has been true, I mean, we've, I get emails about it, and I just had a comment that maybe North Carolinians are coming down and taking, and using it too much. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it at a later date, but right now, it's nice to say they're public courts for everybody to use, and I wish we could do something about that parking lot out there, it's not too.
That was the other thing, I was gonna say, if you have any money left over.
Oh, no, that's big money.
Throw some rocks, at least.
Mayor, actually, that's, I was, I was gonna bring up, yeah, and touching on something that, that Trish said, if you build it, they will come. Yeah, probably the biggest concern that we have from a staff standpoint with doing this is how many more pickleballers are going to come? Because you can dress up that maintenance parking lot all you want to, it's not enough, and not to be able to get in and out. So it's, it's something we'll need to monitor, but we may need to look at in the, you know, whether it's later this fiscal year, going as part of the budget process for next fiscal year, the wooded area up above, converting it into a, a parking lot for that facility.
I don't think there was much appetite for that, last time we talked about it.
Golf park, golf cart parking only, make out of Tanner's, park at Rundy and walk.
That's how you wanna do it. Hey, I'm, you know, I love golf carts.
We'll start caravanning. But thank you all very much for your consideration.
Okay.
Thanks, Trish.
Okay, so we're amending the, go ahead, you wanna?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So I did have the parking concern, too, but then also the bathrooms, I know that that's been, that's come up in terms.
Nope, fixed.
Okay. And those will be able to accommodate the increase in number, if there's like a bunch.
Depends on how much they drink.
A bunch of pickleballers come in, is there any sort of regulation around?
There's no way to increase the restroom size without spending sizable dollars. There's one toilet, one sink, they've got a dedicated restroom for that area that's outside the building, or they don't have to go inside the public works building to, to access it, but it was just recently renovated, I want to say in the last summer.
Yeah.
Early fall.
Yeah.
And then, I guess my, thank you for that, Charlie. And then my next question is, looking at the layouts, I, I can't help but think, if there's the potential, since we've got the, the two that are, I guess perpendicular, and then you've got the four, is there, is there the ability to make those eight, instead of just the, the six within that same footprint?
No, because the, the one side where the two courts existing are, is smaller than the other side.
Already?
If you recall, that was the original.
That's what we wanted to do originally, but it didn't leave enough space out of bounds.
This is the most we can possibly get away with and make.
This will be it.
It is still an enjoyable sport.
Okay.
Without crawling over everybody.
Okay.
Any other comments?
And then, would this allow us to do more, like, tournaments and such, if we had this many?
With just six pickleball courts?
Huh?
If we can park with people.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Does that look good?
Yes.
Sorry.
And, and, and to be, Mayor, Mayor, to be clear, or council, to be clear, our, our parking concerns isn't as much on Saturdays, Sundays, as much as it is during the week and being able to get in and out of the shop, and, you know, with heavy equipment coming in and out in trucks and things like that. Weekends, you know, as long as it's not blocking the, the bay doors to the shop, generally not that big of an issue. Golf, the golf maintenance guys are in early on Saturday mornings and, and gone fairly early, but it's that Monday through Friday where it can, there are times where it can get tight, as I'm sure the.
Well, Trish, if you guys will get a job, it won't be a problem.
Been there, done that one.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you can certainly do tournaments with the, the amount of courts, and you can always tape on the tennis courts on the other side, if you wanted additional courts, you know, in order to do a tournament.
Okay.
Somebody else want to say something?
Any other questions, anybody?
Sorry? No, you're good.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Trish, for everything that you've done for this. And I just wanted to add, as a parent and a resident, and seeing different teenage behavior in the community, and from one aspect, seeing teenagers the other day going into Turner Field and doing donuts and throwing gravel that was in the parking lot. I had a few words with them, versus me playing pickleball and seeing a group of teenagers there that are, that have a hobby and that are keeping them out of trouble. It was just night and day, and I think that that is what everybody.
Was that like 11 at night on Saturday, maybe?
Better than throwing rocks, right? So I, I mean, if anybody is not considering this, that's ju, that's. So I, I mean, if anybody is not considering this, that's just, that's my just extra added push to it because it is, you know, and now the, the parents and the teenagers might fight over the court, but that's just, you know, that could be the worst thing. But anyway, and yeah, on the other side of the tennis courts, sure, we can add four more courts on that side too.
Hey, I'm Christie Scott and I'm the P E teacher at T K K Elementary School. And Alicia, you and I used to be neighbors.
Yes.
I now live off Tuloggi, ninety seventy-three Tuloggi Court. And I've started my second week with pickleball and P E at T K K Elementary School. And the kids absolutely love it and I am telling them about the courts so that they know. And then this past weekend, after I had taught it for a week, I saw two kids with their families there playing pickleball that I hadn't seen ever at the courts because I'm there with Trish as, as often as I can get there. So, yeah.
That's awesome.
So it's going to grow through the kids in our community too. So thanks for all y'all do.
Thank you. We used to tell people, don't, don't tell anybody about T K K because everybody will move here. And now we're doing that with pickleball. We're going to get you, you'll have six courts, but don't tell anybody because they'll come down and use them. You know, it's kind of like, what do we do? Any other comments or questions? Okay, Ron, you want to motion?
Sure. Motion to approve allocating hospitality tax funds necessary to convert one tennis court located at the maintenance facility into two pickleball, pickleball courts.
Four.
Four. Four courts in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
All right. I have a motion and I'm second by Alicia Dash. All in favor, please signal Bob is saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Good. I'm glad for that. It's, you guys deserve some pickleball courts, especially if you're using them as much as I've been seeing you use them. So go tell that unruly crowd out there that go home in peace now. All right, six D, let me get this up on mic. Okay, new business succession of twenty twenty-one council work plan. The council members Overman and Dash met over the holidays to develop a list of items they would like to see the city council work through over the course of twenty twenty-one. Who wants to go first?
I'm going first, okay. So I'm just going to kind of go down this list pretty quickly just so that everybody is kind of on the same page. All of council has seen this and I think there was only one addition. But if there's anything that comes up as I'm going through these, please, you know, let me know and we can, we can add or delete or whatever you want to do. And these are primarily already order ranked based on previous conversations, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in this order. So our number one goal is Kotaba Park. Our goal is to break ground this spring or summer for phase one. The goal is to approve an I P R B in April, May council meeting for funding, staff to complete the final design and permitting and bids should be going out this month. Are we thinking that's still the same? Close, okay. And then to have, continue on those discussions for future phases because obviously we want it to get to completion at some point. We don't want to have to be talking about this another decade from now. Number two, evaluate and prioritize pedestrian and bike plan connectivity. So this speaks to mainly planning, but could potentially be the E D C as well. And we're hoping to maybe have you guys, Planning Commission, sorry, I'm, I'm looking at you, Chris, but to kind of look at this by March to bring something forward to council just to kind of give us an idea of what to prioritize. There are a lot of connectivity issues throughout the city. Some, you know, need trails, some need sidewalks. There's just not, I guess, issues or not issues, but we would, the, the rumor or the, what people want is that more connectivity. So how do we prioritize those to make sure that we are getting people where they need to go as effectively as possible?
I could just add to that one real quick. I know that on here too, it says, you know, prioritization coordination with economic development to and council. And so what's important there is you've got your planning where they approved the bike and pet plan as part of the area planner, we all did. But we also want the E D folks to look at it from, from that perspective. And so thinking about connectivity and getting people from one place to another place, what is, from your guys' perspective, you know, does, you know, priority number four need to be number two or things like that? So taking a look at it that way. And just a follow up from our budget conversations, I know that, I believe there were two opportunities to look at some trails when we talked about the budget process. That was pushed off till our conversation forthcoming in March. And what we really want to make sure is that those two items that we're looking at funding really are the top priority of the city. And so by putting this here and having the Planning Commission, Economic Development and Council all working together, we can make sure that we are funding the right projects that are the most important to us first and then coming up with a plan for the, the future projects after that.
If I, if I can, as, and as I shared with Ms. Overman when she sent me the list, perhaps a, a, some type of community survey, not just on which trail section do you think is most important, but also which one would you or your family, your household use the most? And it may even be interesting to see if those things still rank the same order once we tell folks how much those trails cost. Yeah, some, some will cost just a little bit of volunteer labor if it's a nature trail or, you know, some, you know, will come with a big price tag, you know, based on location. Sometimes it may be good to hang a price tag beside it to see if that's still the number one priority. Yeah, I mean, but I, I, I definitely would, you know, can work with Susan, you know, on this, but would definitely like to see some type of total community input through some type of survey. I think may be a good idea on that.
Yeah, I think that's good. Number three was crosswalk and pedestrian improvements, finally. And we're hoping, S C D O T has given us the estimation of May, April or May of this year that we will put rapid flashing beacons at the Haran Harbor intersection. But we also want to, after that's put in place, to evaluate the impacts and get feedback from the community. Obviously, when we had to do the pedestrian study, they noted two other intersections along T K Drive that would be prioritized, so to speak, later on, but is the one that goes in at Haran Harbor effective? Is it working? Do the residents there that are using the crosswalk, you know, feel like it was a good investment? Those kinds of things so that we can make sure that we're putting things in down the road that, that makes sense. Alicia, you want to take a stab at the next few?
Sure. So the next one, this one is review and update the business license policies and procedures. And this is, this one I think is a carryover from last year as well. And I think Economic Development Committee is working on this, Gus, you're leading that effort, right? To take a look at business licenses and revise that. So that will be great. Update procurement policy. This is also one that's carrying over from last year that we need to take a look at. What I'm hoping council is to have a draft before you or to you before our meeting in February to take a look at. February council meeting, perhaps we can have discussion on it. What do we like, what do we not like, any concerns? And then hopefully at that point, get community feedback and then have it ready for our March adoption. Let's see, small area plans for mixed use districts. This is listed as a top priority for the Planning Commission and their work plan. So they're again going to be working with E D C and Retail Strategies that was, well, has hired last year, I believe. And then we're hoping that council will adopt a plan for resolution within the first ninety days. So again, we're looking at a busy March agenda. The next one is the Public Art Ordinance. This one, great work done by the Planning Commission early last year. They went ahead and approved a resolution or they recommended a resolution that we approved. So now it's really taking that resolution to the next level and figuring out what kind of mechanism do we want to have in place so we can really elevate this program, find opportunities for funding, things like that. I know that Susan Britt is working on a, a, a potential grant opportunity for some public art. So we're hoping that perhaps this year we might be able to add the first public art installation, which would be a, a great milestone for the city. Okay, the next one, elevation of stormwater ordinance and establishment of corrective action. Gus, I know you're dying to talk about this one. You want to talk about that one, just the, the stormwater ordinance?
We've been debating back and forth about looking at our stormwater ordinance, whether it needs to be refined and possibly made stricter than, than state. So evaluation of stormwater ordinance and establishment of corrective action. Planning Commission will establish a technical committee to make recommendations to the rest of the Planning Commission and to council by June twenty twenty-one. And it's almost a subline, number nine, evaluate remediation plans and costs for the tributary that flows through Serenity Point and discuss funding potential. It's just, that's been an ongoing issue and looking at certainly if there's ways to do this without city funds would be, would be best, but just to try and find a way to, of course, we've spent a lot of time and effort on it and I guess I think that we should continue to do so to at least leave every stone unturned, although a lot of them have been turned over, to, to try and remediate this issue.
Thank you, Gus. The next one, city facility updates. So throughout this past year, folks have noticed that we've been able to improve some of our parks, especially our facilities at our parks, so Windjammer, Turner, what we'd like to. Pickering, thank you. So what we'd like to do is continue in that process to make sure, or to, to try to make some alignment or some consistency throughout our city facilities. So taking a look at what city facilities don't look, look like the other, which one isn't like the other? And figuring out how can we fund these so that we're just improving the look and feel of, of our area and our community. Another part of that is taking a look at the pool facility. I know that Parks and Rec got a new space, very exciting. So now that they've got their own building, there's some additional space that's becoming available at the pool clubhouse. And so what we'd like to do is take a look at that and, and think through, how can we make that space more event friendly? Perhaps expand the kitchen, which could offer more opportunities for renting that facility or being an even better community resource than it already is. And then, of course, one that we've had lots of discussion about is review of the maintenance facility and alternative options or locations for that, since that tennis pickleball area is so active and there might be some opportunities in the future to expand if we can find the maintenance folks a new home. The next one, enhance capital budget process and plan for a five-year outlook. So what, what I would hope that we can do this year as well is identify our capital improvement priorities, get them in a, in a plan, ideally a three to five-year plan so that we're not only identifying what are the needs, but we're also figuring out what is the, what are the funding needs for year one? What are the funding needs for each project year two? What are the funding needs for year three plus, you know, four or five? And then what are those, what are those anticipated revenue resources that we could use to actually fund those? So really coming up with something robust that we can then add into our budget review process annually and, and improve that, our capital plan, our capital budget each year, just right along with our operating budget. The next one, Lookout Park Drainage. This is one that, we know that Lookout Park, I know Heather and I have young kids that play soccer there all the time and it's been, past couple of years, been pretty soggy. So if there are drainage needs or whatnot, just figuring out how can we make that field more usable so we don't have to cancel as many games or, you know, things like that. So we, we added that to the list. There's a few other here for, for discussion. I'll just say them real quick, Stonecrest Boulevard lighting, small town feel events. And of course, events aren't really a popular thing these days. And then one big one that we wanted to talk about too is the evaluation of tennis facilities and association needs. So.
Can I add something in there?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was wondering where it falls in is that this young man has been talking about getting a skate park. I want to add that in there somewhere in the, I know we're still in the discussion phase, but he's pretty adamant about it. You know, I thought we'd make sure we consider that, give it all the due consideration.
Yeah, I think that's a great.
What item would that fall under?
I think that, I think that could be a standalone item.
Okay, just something to think about. We know it's coming and we don't have any funding plans yet or where it's going to go, but I just know it's, I've seen plenty of emails from him, so I don't think it's going to go away. So let's, let's.
It's low cost too.
What's that?
I said it's low cost too. It's not a huge capital investment.
Yeah, two hundred, two hundred, two or three hundred thousand?
No, no, not one that big, one ramp, one small ramp.
Made a palace.
Okay, so we'll add evaluation of skate park. I think that's a great item. And I think that there are some folks out working on that. Like you said, there's been some emails. One of the things that we wanted to have discussion with City Council on here, Stonecrest, Stonecrest Boulevard lighting. So now that we've been able to start that process of redoing the landscaping in the middle of, of Stonecrest, we had before identified some lighting needs on that area. And without the, the, the tree scape now, they're more like smaller bushes. And so I think on the, the capital budget list for, that we're going to evaluate in March, had a line item identified there for funding the street lighting. So we wanted to bring that up and just see what, what, what we still wanted to do, if that was something we want to continue to evaluate or change the scale or scope based on those landscaping improvements. And Gus, I don't know what your thoughts are there.
I've always, you know, envisioned Stonecrest being, you know, it, it'll never be T K K Drive, but it's going to be, I mean, it is an arterial road and it is, you know, a, a, a main road on that side. I would love to see it one day lit up the way T K K Drive is. Those hollies going to have to grow a little bit before we can light those up during the holidays. But, you know, if, if the funds are available in the budget to make that happen, at least to get the groundwork laid now for, for future use, I mean, I'd, you know, here again, Charlie, those hollies will be six feet tall in four or five years. Is that right?
Yours, Tim. You're, you're asking the wrong city employee on that one. I think they grow to eight to ten foot high. How long that takes, we can find out for you.
I just, I, I, I mean, it would be, I, I think it would be great to see those lit up the way T K K Drive is lit up at some point. But here again, there's a lot of growing, it's got to go on before then. But I, I think it'd probably be a lot easier based on the cost of everything going up and while the landscaping is limited there to at least lay the, the groundwork for it.
My only concern with that is if we have a lot of development, commercial developing, development, well, residential right now going in on that Stonecrest, I don't even know what we call it anymore, the game on area. You know, they're probably going to tear up that road quite a bit coming in and out and obviously they'll have to fix that. Don't freak out anybody. But, you know, do we want to install electricity under there only to maybe have issues later on? Or do we want to, and I'm just, I'm just saying out loud, do we want to wait and plan it right? Or maybe the developer, it's, you know, like that's something to negotiate too down the road. I don't know. So something to think about.
Do we know what type of, well, I guess maybe this is some part of the, the work that could be done is just looking at what type of right-of-way easements are needed during the development? And if those are going to be like digging up within that right-of-way, perhaps that there's opportunities there to cut some costs down?
So if I, if I may, council, I, I know Heather and Alicia, thank you for, for the, these are all amazing things, no doubt. There are a lot of stuff I think is pretty self-explanatory. I think several things need a lot more discussion and, or maybe discussion rather than guidance as far as what you're looking for and things like that. Would council be acceptable to do, schedule a workshop sometime here in the, in the coming weeks? Whether it's between now and the February meeting or between the February and the March meeting? Weekday, Saturday, you know, it, the further out into February we get, Saturdays start getting a lot harder because, especially for me with youth sports and coaching, but, and I know, you know, Heather and Alicia are involved in our youth sports programs as well, but I'm going to need, yeah, just looking at some of these and Heather, I've provided you with some comments back, but, you know, off, off the initial list. But I think there needs to be a lot of, lot of discussion with, with various staff members that, on some of these things so they can hear firsthand from council and we can have that dialogue. Yeah, like, I mean, and, and not to start that discussion tonight, but like small town events, you know, small town feel events. Which ones? What, what, what do we want to do? What, what other ones, yeah, have you heard from folks in the community? Because, I mean, from, from mine and Joey's standpoint, and again, people call y'all more than they call us, is please make sure you do the concerts this year. Yeah, we, we haven't heard, do, do other things. Yeah, and when we do those other things, we got to figure out. And when we do those other things, we got to figure out what the logistics are, you know, who, yeah, I mean, I don't have a lot of staff sitting around asking for things to do, you know? So figuring out who's, and I'm just using that as one, as one thing, but, you know, yeah, I think there's conversations we had about Lookout, the, the city facilities, the, the budgeting process, things like that. You bring up the, you're wanting to talk about the procurement ordinance, you know, in time for the March meeting, you know, is, is part of y'all's discussion. I would like Bob Barkin involved in that to make sure that all of a sudden there's not levels and layers that we don't even have at a staffing standpoint that, that are in there, you know, those kind of things. So that's, I mean, I, I think it's a phenomenal list, I think it's a very robust list. I got, I'll be honest, I'm tired already, exhausted. It's a lot to do, but yeah, I love busy, love being busy and, and progressing forward, but I think we're going to need a lot more guidance than perhaps as part of just a regular council meeting to be able to realistically try to take big chunks of this, you know, through the course of 2021. That's my, my opinion.
Yeah, with last year kind of everything getting put on hold, a lot of this stuff got pushed to this year and with some of us rolling off potentially at the end of, you know, this year, it, it is a little robust, as you said, but definitely things I think that we can accomplish, so.
And make progress towards.
For sure.
And I think, you know, to your point, I think there are a lot of things that we can certainly flesh out, totally open to, to workshop or a series of workshop, workshops to, to ensure that, but, you know, and then it's, you know, council's work, work list and, you know, we, I would anticipate that based on these things, if we do, do want to see these done, that we're actually working towards them. So we are doing some of the work or we're helping to lead the effort or helping staff where, you know, wherever you need the, the guidance or the additional assistance or things like that. And I'll, I'll just add to the small-town, town feel event. So part of the comp plan, we heard loud and clear that everyone likes that, that small-town feel of TK. And so we, I think la, beginning of last year, we said, what can we do or how can we help preserve that or, or enhance that? And so a couple ideas of events had come up. COVID hit, it was something we didn't necessarily want to take off the list, but just said further discussion because we don't know what the future holds, right, with COVID? And so if there's opportunities, perhaps, perhaps it's this year, perhaps it, it doesn't happen this year, it's in the years to come.
I'll be happy to, yeah, here in the next area, so throw out some dates, push some dates council's way, see, see if we can find dates and times that, that everybody can get together on and once council has decided, then I'll work with staff, department heads and things like that to make sure, because I think it's been since 2019 since we had a, this type of, of meetings, so I think it'd be good. So I'll be more than happy to, to get those dates and, and, you know, flush that out with council.
And Charlie, one, one last quick thing, sorry, Mayor. The, I know that you had mentioned doing a survey for the comp plan, or for the, the bike, bike plan, pedestrian bike plan. Perhaps there's some opportunity to utilize some of the surveys that were done through the, the comp plan process that was approved last year? And that might help cut down on some of that, that workload, but, and, and make it more manageable, because I think that there was a lot of really, like, good feedback that we got. There was good response rate on those, so we could perhaps utilize some of that data to help.
Sure.
Frame, frame that.
Anybody else? All right, looks like we, anybody in the audience got any comments? Nope, wake up. All right, what's next? See, actually, motion, we have a motion on this? We don't need a motion on this?
I, I, I don't think so at this point, based on how this conversation went.
Save that for the next day. Then let's move on to item seven, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As council's aware, COVID numbers in the state and in the area have jumped over the past few months. Our staff has been hit with this surge as well and our public safety departments were hit probably the hardest. That's the bad news. Good news is they were still able to operate and protect our city, citizens and businesses at a high level, even when they were shorthanded. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every member of our police and fire departments for their efforts, especially those that had to work extra shifts and be away from their families over the last few weeks. Also like to thank Chief Parker and Chief Hasty for their efforts and leadership during this time. Both chiefs devised plans for their departments to make sure everything was covered, including working shifts themselves. At this point, we're almost back to 100% strength and several of our folks have either already had their first vaccination or are scheduled to, thanks to Governor McMaster, moving those critical first responders up to the 1A tier group. So got, got folks either vacci, you know, starting their vaccination or about to and definitely hats off to those folks. I mean, at one point, we had six firefighters and 11 members of our police department, which doesn't sound like a lot until you hear the, well, we've only got 17 firefighters and six of them were on quarantine or, you know, had COVID. So, yeah, it's, it's been a grueling couple of weeks, but, you know, we, we're, we're on the other side of that and hats off to those folks. Spring registration for youth sports will conclude on February 6th. My Parks and Rec Department is informing me that we may have as many as 1,800, 17, 1,800, give or take.
Depends on how much.
We've got, the, the numbers are exponentially higher this, at this point in time than they have been in the past. So kind of hoping everybody just signed up early instead of waiting till the last week, but that usually doesn't seem to be the case. So they'll be monitoring those, you know, over the coming weeks. So if you haven't gotten signed up yet and you're playing along at home with us tonight, I would suggest doing so, jump online and, and get that done. Kind of good news, bad news on this one. Tom Goble, our Development Services Director, has officially announced his retirement as of May 1st. And congratulations to Mrs. Susan Britt, who will be taking the helm of that department effective May 1st. We're excited for Susan and her, and, and her coming role, forthcoming role with the organization. And while we're certainly missed Tom, we are exciting for him, excited for him as he transitions to the next chapter. There's still a lot to do between now and then, but, and we will most certainly take time, take the opportunity to celebrate Tom in April before he leaves, but wanted to make council aware that we'll, we'll be moving through that transition and knew it was coming. I didn't officially let Tom begin the countdown until after we got into 2021 and he, he reminded me very quickly, it's May 1, here we go. So, but excited for him and excited for Susan. If council will recall, during the budget process, both staff and council identified several key capital items, kind of part of the conversation we're having tonight. Originally, we had talked about having that conversation in March. Actually going to be able to start having that conversation at your next council meeting. So things are looking, looking well, trending well from a financial standpoint through the first quarter of the fiscal year. This was the first Christmas, I didn't have to put bars on Barkin's window to keep him from flinging himself out into traffic, so we're really, really pleased with how things are trending. So over the next couple of weeks, I'll be meeting with department heads on those things. Obviously, some of the things on that list can come off the list now, i.e. the, the jet ski and, and the, the craft for the fire department since Chief Hasty was able to get grants. So we're going to look back through those, tighten that up, double-check the numbers, get that out to you guys so that y'all have got ample opportunity to, to ask questions, things like that, well in advance of your package. So be looking for that here in the, in the coming days and weeks. And last but certainly not least, I'd like, I'd like to jump in and congratulate Emily Pilarzak again, as the father of two amazing daughters. I think it's absolutely amazing what she accomplished, really, really cool stuff, becoming the first female Eagle Scout in the Palmetto Council. Also think it's incredible the number of Eagle Scout that council has been able to recognize over the years. You know, just at the December meeting, there were so many, we did it before the meeting started, the mayor did, had six of them come through. It's, I'm starting to think we may have more Eagle Scouts per capita than anywhere else in the country at the rate that we're going, but, yeah, they've, they've all been special in their own right, but to have the first female right here in TK and to be able to not only recognize her for her accomplishment, but also for such a tremendous project with Winthrop University, I think that probably ranks right up at the top for me. So if they're still listening, watching at home, congratulations once again to Emily on a job well done. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Absolutely. When I was in high school, many, many moons ago, we had two Eagle Scouts the whole year.
Didn't they quit in eighth grade then?
I mean, so, just to have so many as we have around here is really an accomplishment. And I want to congratulate Tom and Susan, I think that's a job well done. And I also have some good news, and some good news, that I also am retiring December 31st. And the other good news is I'm retiring December 31st. So if I haven't told anybody that 40 times before, I just want to say it again. I like saying that, I'm going to retire December 31st. Let's see, I was going to say, oh, it's council comments. Alicia?
Just want to say, sorry, just want to say I'm looking forward to the spring soccer season, coaching the U5 little kickers for the first time, so looking to Joey and his staffer guidance on how to coach a five and under.
Watch the snaps.
But that being said too, I just wanted to advertise real quickly, if anyone wants to join me in this journey, they are looking for more U5 little kicker coaches. So if you're interested, please let Joey know or his team. Congratulations, Tom, Susan, and David.
Yeah.
On your retirements and promotions and all that good stuff, so, thank you guys, thank you, council.
Do you got anything? And Gus?
Heather, Alicia, thank you for your work on the work plan, we appreciate that. Congratulations to Tom and to Susan. That was an easy choice, wasn't it, Charlie? I would congratulate Dave, but he's been telling us for.
Three years?
Yeah, three years, and I think he's got a countdown on it. I don't know how many people are watching at home, I got a random public service announcement real quick. One of the coolest things about living in TK is the, the people and the relationships that, that you get. I've, I've lived here for, this is year 24, I think, and I'm in my third house and, you know, you, you, you meet new people and you have friends and TK is full of fire pits and impromptu cookouts and people grilling, and yes, grilling is a verb, and those kind of things. And you get really close to people and, you know, then life gets in the way and, and you don't see people. So I would just like to say that, you know, if you have a chance after this meeting or tomorrow, whatever, if there's somebody that, that was one of those people to you, that was very important to you growing up or growing up your kids and you haven't seen them in a while because life comes at us all so fast, take a minute to give them a call and tell them how important they were to you. And I may have personal reasons for doing that, I'm not going to get into them, so, but anyway, just wanted to, to bring that up to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Gus. I just have one thing, when we all met three years ago, the first thing we talked about what is important to us was Parks and Rec, how recreation in this town is, is very important. And I was glad to see we got pickleball people straightened out for at least another eight, 10 months. We'll see what's around the corner. You know, you never know with pickleball, it's going to grow, grow, grow. And I'm glad to see Catawba Park is, is the thing that's going to help me retire. If we don't do Catawba Park, maybe I'll stay around until, so watch him get really motivated to get Catawba Park going. And that's all I have to say, and I want to like to make a motion to adjourn. Does I have a second? Everybody should second that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. We're adjourned.